Good evening, everyone. Now that we have our chairs fixed, this October 9th, 2014, regular meeting number five of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Sandberg Middle School Corollets under the direction of Jean Crowley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. (Music) 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 (Music)
It's wonderful to hear all the unique and beautiful renditions of our National Anthem. Thank you so much, Sandberg Middle School Corollets.
And thank you, parents, for bringing your children here tonight. It was lovely performance.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing them with us.
Thank you.
We certified our closed meeting at our forum, which we held earlier tonight. So we will move on to announcements. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website and select School Board and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. This meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. If you have signed up to speak before the School Board during citizen participation, please turn in 16 copies of your remarks at this time to the Deputy Clerk, Ms. Goddard, sitting at the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. And I will now call on Ms. McLaughlin for the first announcement, followed by Mr. Latif for additional announcements. Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Kofax. For October, it is Recognition of Dyslexia Awareness Month. October is our National Dyslexia Awareness Month here in the United States. Dyslexia is a language-based learning disability that results in people having difficulties learning to read, spell, write, and pronounce words. Recognizing the markers of dyslexia and intervening early helps to provide opportunities for future success. This month, the Office of Special Education and Instruction will be offering a series of events in an effort to raise awareness about dyslexia. On Friday, October 10th, a Parents Workshop on Strategies to Support Students with Dyslexia is scheduled at the Parent Resource Center, and will highlight strategies, accommodations, resources, and free technology tools to help support students with dyslexia. Please check our FCPS website for more information. And Ms. Kofax, I just want to say that it's very moving tonight to see so many of you parents here coming out and showing your support for something that affects up to one in five children in Fairfax County schools. And I want to personally express my great appreciation to our Superintendent Garza and Dr. Dockery and her team, who are wanting to work so closely with our community to really help bring vital change to the supports and the educational opportunities for our students here in Fairfax County. So again, parents, thank you so much for being here tonight.
Ms. Schultz would also like to make a brief comment.
Yeah, I do. I want to echo my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin's comments. I'm so thankful for the tremendous showing of support this month for this awareness. And I want to especially thank Dr. Garza as the liaison to the Community Committee on Students with Disabilities, the Advisory Committee. It is one of the very first things I spoke to Dr. Garza, actually before she even took office, that we needed to focus on this. And she listened, she paid attention, and she acted. And so we are seeing the traction that we need to make a difference for the students that you're advocating for. So I'm very, very thankful to both she and you as a community for engaging us on this topic.
Thank you all for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Mr. Latif, to continue with announcements.
Thank you. Couple other announcements. We are recognizing National School Lunch Week from October 13th through 17th, using the theme, quote, "Get in the Game with School Lunch." The 2014 National School Lunch Week will encourage students to find a balance between healthy eating and physical activity and exercise. The 2014 event will also spotlight the healthy foods and positive changes, including the addition of more fruits and vegetables, more whole grains, and less fat and sodium that FCPS has incorporated into its menus. The National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs. There's a continued need for nutrition education and awareness and the value of school nutrition programs, and the School Board encourages all residents to become more aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutritional habits. In hopes of achieving a more healthy citizenry for today and for the future, we're also recognizing Teen Read Week from October 12th to the 18th. Teen Read Week encourages teens to go beyond the traditional book and explore poetry, audiobooks, books about music, and more at their school and local library. The 2014 theme, quote, "Turn Dreams Into Reality at Your Library," encourages teens to learn about the inspirational stories, career resources, and how-to books available at their local libraries. Teen Read Week has been observed since 1998 in an effort to engage teens in reading for pleasure and fun and to use the services at the library. Research shows that teens who read for fun have better test scores and are more likely to succeed in the workforce. The School Board encourages all FCPS teenage students to take advantage of the resources in their schools and public library to become lifelong leaders and learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. I now call on Mr. Velkoff for Recognition of National School Bus Safety Week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The week of October 20th through 24th has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week. Based on the theme, "At My Stop, You Stop," the week focuses on student safety when waiting for and boarding a school bus while reminding motorists to stop when a school bus has its red lights flashing. School bus safety is an issue for all citizens of Fairfax County who need to be aware of the laws requiring them to stop and wait behind a school bus when it is loading and unloading student riders. The major responsibility for school bus safety in Fairfax County rests firmly in the hands of our school bus drivers and attendants, who daily transport more than 130,000 students in over 1,500 school buses, traveling nearly 17 million operational miles each year. So at this time, I'd like to ask if there are school bus drivers here in the room, and I would like to invite them to come forward and have a picture with the School Board.
I now call on Ms. Strauss for Recognition of Outstanding Middle School Principal of Virginia by the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. Tonight, on behalf of the School Board, it's my pleasure to recognize Ms. Carol Keem, Principal of Longfellow Middle School, for being named the 2014 Outstanding Middle School Principal of Virginia by the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals. Ms. Keem currently serves as President of the FCPS Middle School Principals Association and is the former Chair of the Middle School Instructional Services Committee. And Carol, if you'd like to come up and stand while we say kind things about you, if you'd like to just come and stand by the podium. Ms. Keem began her administrative career in 2001 at Fairfax High School, where she served as Acting Assistant Principal and Director of Student Services until 2007. She then served as Assistant Principal at Franklin Middle School before being named a Principal of Longfellow Middle School in 2008, where she was named FCPS First Year Principal of the Year in 2009, and that was a wonderful celebration, too. Ms. Keem was praised by students, teachers, and parents as a collaborative team builder who used innovation to lead the school and implemented many academic initiatives that significantly raised students' SOL math scores. And let me just give you an idea of the numbers. Because of Ms. Keem's initiatives and team building at Longfellow, the pass rate for economically disadvantaged students rose from, in math, from 73% to 92%, from 63% to 91% for students with disabilities, and 62% to 91% for African-American students the following years. This is a fabulous success story, and we are very grateful for that. Also, Ms. Keem was there to lead Longfellow through the renovation, which was a wonderful adventure. And through Ms. Keem's effort, we actually got an extra story in what was going to be a two-story addition. It became a three-story addition. And squeezed every penny. We love our building at Longfellow. Also, while Ms. Keem was there, we've been able to have two gardens, with rain gardens and a vegetable garden. And in other words, Carol knows how to fully use every piece of the instructional program building grounds for the good of her students. Ms. Keem has provided support and constructive feedback to teachers and challenged them to reach beyond the basic curriculum to tap into students' interests and passions. She monitored faculty and staff needs and preserved instructional time for teachers by limiting paperwork and extra duties. The School Board is very proud to have Ms. Keem here in Fairfax County Public Schools, and we congratulate her on this prestigious achievement. I'd like to now present Ms. Keem with a certificate of recognition from the School Board, and if your family or other fans are here, would like to come forward and we'll have a picture. Thank you. School Board members.
My two Assistant Principals are here. We don't want to come down. Thank you very much. Thank you, Julie.
While our board members are all getting back to their places, I just have to make a couple of comments. Carol is an extraordinary principal, and we're very, very proud of this award that she's received, but it's also very deserving, and she certainly makes us look good here in Fairfax County Public Schools. So she's an outstanding principal, but she's also a leader among leaders. Last year, she was President of the Middle School Principals Association and played an instrumental role in helping me as a new superintendent, but also with really guiding a lot of the work that we're doing division-wide. And she continues to be a leader and really be very forward-thinking in the work that we're doing here. So I'm very proud and very glad that you're in our school system, and just thank you for your service and for the great work that you're doing for children. We're very proud of you. So congratulations. And then I didn't get too early. I was going to say something about our school bus drivers. You know, safety is our number one most important priority. Parents expect for our children to be safe at school. Well, it starts every morning with our bus drivers. And that's their first contact for many of our children in the morning on their way to school, is their interaction with our bus drivers. And they do a great job. But for parents, I think for us that've had a carload of children and been driving around, how difficult that can be. Can you imagine 45 or more students? It's an arduous task, particularly given the traffic they have to navigate in our county. But we're very, very grateful for the service of our bus drivers and getting our children to school in a positive and safe manner, and getting them home safely as well. So we're very grateful for the important role that our bus drivers play in our overall mission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. We move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Presentations to our Board. The next order of business, then, is citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the School Board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the School Board Office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The School Board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, the budget or boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concern should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Citizens are encouraged to write the School Board on any school-related topic. Speakers are required to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the Board. Tonight, five citizens have signed up to address the Board. They include Louise Epstein, Joe Newber, Jim Ruland, Sue Anna Clark, and Ann Geberts. So Ms. Epstein, if you would please come up.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and School Board members. My name's Louise Epstein, and tonight I'll talk about the importance of an independent audit committee. Since 2012, you've made a lot of progress. Under Dan Stork's able leadership, last year's audit committee set the stage for tonight's three motions: to approve an audit plan with performance audits, to add a fourth School Board member to the Audit Committee, and to create an Auditor General position. However, more changes are needed. After attending Audit Committee meetings for the last few years, it became apparent that four School Board members were consistently working to fend off or limit the impact of well-intentioned proposals. First, in 2012, you accepted recommendations from Ms. Hines and Ms. Strauss to convert the Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent from voting to non-voting members and to keep the CFO as a non-voting participant on the Audit Committee. Why? Many people claim that this form-over-substance change resolved the independence issue, but in reality, as Ms. Strauss explained, voting rights were meaningless because the Audit Committee never voted on anything. Second, what happened to the proposal to add two community appointees to the Audit Committee? Mr. Moon and Ms. Strauss, your efforts to give staff a role in selecting them could call into question their independence. Does county staff help select the two appointees to the supervisor's Audit Committee? I don't think so. Third, adding a fourth School Board member for the Audit Committee could be a step backwards if the School Board Chair appoints people whose primary goal is to minimize independent scrutiny. I hope that doesn't happen. Fourth, Ms. Smith, Mr. Moon, and Ms. Strauss, your changes to the Auditor General job description on Monday reduced the role of the Audit Committee. How much value can two expert appointees add if the Auditor General reports to the full School Board instead of to the Audit Committee? And finally, what happened to proposals by Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Reed, and others to give internal audit a role in developing, analyzing, and briefing School Board members on program evaluations? Until the public has more confidence in those evaluations, people will wonder about budgets and the motives for some studies. For example, staff issued a tipping point study last year. Statisticians and scientists told me it was junk science, but Ms. Hines immediately cited the study during budget discussions and used it to advocate for zoning staff's residential studio unit proposal. And it appeared that a half-baked study was rushed out, perhaps at the behest of a School Board member, to avoid certain proposed budget cuts and to support the RSU zoning proposal. With Dr. Garza at the helm, things have improved a lot. I even wondered today if I should just declare victory with tonight's motions. But all organizations need checks and balances, even those with great CEOs. Dr. Garza alone cannot force staff to do objective and thorough programmed evaluations, which may criticize programs run by their colleagues and friends. And one day, we will have a different superintendent with a different approach to the job. And that's why we need more independent scrutiny of instructional programs and operations and a more independent Audit Committee. Thank you.
Ms. Newber.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Garza. My name is Joe Newber. I stand before you tonight to request that the Audit Committee expand its plan this year to include performance audit of annual school-based student enrollment projections. Based on my attached Wolf Trap Elementary School analysis, which you have at the back of the packet, I believe projections continue to be well below the actual student enrollment levels, and not just in Wolf Trap, but throughout the county. Why is the audit important? I have a second grader at Wolf Trap Elementary, and he is directly affected by those low projections and the resulting low school budgets, fewer teachers, larger class sizes. In my attached Table 1, you'll see that our early elementary students, K to 3, face large class sizes for a second year in a row, 29 students per class. And all our K to 6 classes have again experienced crowded classes with more than half at or exceeding 29. Over the course of the prior month, I've witnessed a lot of dropped balls due to our overtasked teachers in these large classes. Missing homework packets and passwords, teachers consistently working late with a lot of parent help, and routinely being pulled into admin meetings to prepare for the future disruption that will come when we get our blended first, second grade class. This is not the first year this has happened. It was a similar story of disruption in October last year, when we reorganized our second grade classes and were able to find a fourth second grade teacher. I see a pattern emerging here with poorly projected class sizes, and our students are suffering. Is this due in part to inaccurate student enrollment projections that lead to our underfunded operating budget at our schools? In my attachment in Graph 1, you can see a comparison of the projected to actual enrollment at Wolf Trap. Look at projected student enrollment numbers. They would suggest a large decline in enrollment at Wolf Trap Elementary, yet the opposite is occurring year over year. Actual student enrollment has increased on average 10 to 15 students a year in the prior five years. And according to a Fairfax County study performed in your CIP report, there will be more than 6,700 students in all Fairfax County schools in grades K to 6 by 2018. Our actual enrollments are increasing, not declining. You'll also see that there are fewer dollars per student at our elementary school, and I know we're not unique at this. Many schools suffer from a declining budget. Our budget this year, per student, is 5,170, and that's for in-school expenses. That's well below the average of 6,500 spent per student across all Fairfax County public schools. I must say, I am a... Thank you for your time. I would ask that you consider an audit to look at student enrollment projections. Thank you.
Thank you. (Applause) Mr. Ruland.
Good evening, Dr. Garza and members of the School Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight about the composition of the Audit Committee. My name is Jim Ruland. I'm a lawyer who cares about transparency and accountability, and that's why I did some research on Audit Committees and yours in particular. What I learned is that they normally don't include organization managers as voting or non-voting members or participants. That makes sense. Otherwise, it'd be tough for an Audit Committee to have probing discussions about whether employees engaged in malfeasance or had a conflict of interest. When these topics are discussed and the scope of potential audit project is being defined, managers should not be in the room. Then I looked at the Fairfax County Public School Regulation 1420.4 on internal audit. According to that regulation, your Audit Committee includes three managers, who are either non-voting members or non-voting participants: the Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, and Chief Financial Officer. That fact is not disclosed on other Fairfax County Public School webpages. And by the way, is only available to someone who takes the time to read the regulation. When you met with Sharon Bulova earlier this year on the budget, several of you even told her there were no managers on your Audit Committee. I wondered why I had to dig to find this out. Was it because somebody felt uncomfortable disclosing this to the public and to the supervisors? It may be argued... It could be argued that there is no harm because these members have no vote. Well, these officials are entitled to attend, entitled to speak, and entitled to steer the discussion at the Audit Committee meetings. Some may conclude that this is no different than having the fox guarding the hen house. Isn't it a wonder that civic associations pass resolutions recommending that you eliminate managers from the Audit Committee? A few years ago, you added a third school A few years ago, you added a third school board member. Last year, your audit committee recommended adding two community appointees with financial managerial experience plus a fourth school board member. However, the audit committee didn't recommend removing the managers. Why not? Apparently, some people believe the Virginia Freedom of Information Act is inconsistent with that proposal, but this simply isn't plausible. First, the audit committee members could always vote to hold a closed meeting under Section 2.2, 3711 of the Virginia Code, which explicitly allows for closed meetings regarding assignments, appointments, promotions, demotions, performance evaluation, disciplinary procedures, or resignations of public employees. For example, what if one of the managers on the audit committee was involved in an effort to cover up unethical actions in awarding contracts? Wouldn't that potentially chill discussion during the audit committee meetings? Second, members of the public are not entitled to participate in committee discussions. Thus, managers who attend an audit committee meeting, even if it was not closed to non-members or non-participants, would not be able to steer discussion away from some topics and toward others. For staff input, you can always invite the appropriate manager to join the committee for discussion. I'm pleased with your efforts to fortify the internal audit office. I would urge you to add two generally independent and financially knowledgeable community appointees to the audit committee and consider removing the three managers. Thank you.
Ms. Clark.
I'm here to encourage you to vote in favor of Dr. Garza's blueprint for change. I participated in the community input meeting at South Lake High School last spring and was very impressed with the collaborative and professional structure provided. It was evident that the school board and FCPS staffs entered into this project with serious intent and the desire to learn both what was best for kids and for our community as a whole. Thank you, Dr. Garza, school board members, and FCPS administrators and staff who worked on this project, and especially for utilizing the services of Children's National Medical Center to provide science-based research as the backdrop to this conversation. I've been a high school teacher and middle school administrator for the county over the last 28 years. I'm also the mother of a Herndon Middle School student. The 7:20 start time for high school students has always been a concern. As a teacher, I saw students who struggled to focus, even stay awake. Many were hungry because they'd be too rushed to eat before leaving home. And frankly, I was tired, too, from starting my day so early. When I became an administrator, I came to understand the logistical realities of getting all of our children to school and marveled at the parade of buses I saw each day. So I was delighted to discover you were seriously studying this issue and looking for solutions, and even more thrilled to hear from the transportation staff member at the community input meeting I attended that the options included trimming routes and the false tier, the wait time spent on buses before school by our tired middle and high schoolers. When I saw the final option selection, I knew you'd selected what was best for high school students, staff, and our larger community. But of course, I was concerned about the middle schoolers now being the ones to start early, especially given the research the CNMC has provided. And then I thought, hmm, because his bus arrives so early, my son already is at school at 7:30. We can do this. Thus, I'm here to say yes to the blueprint for change and also yes to the part of the plan that includes tightening arrival times. No student should sit on a bus waiting to disembark for more than five minutes in the morning, much less the 20 to 30 minutes that many do. I applaud you for bringing the county to this place, doing what the research shows is so clearly best for our high school students by allowing them to have more sleep time, and I encourage you to fund transportation as needed to end the false tier, allowing middle and high school students alike to gain as much precious sleep time as possible each morning. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, our last speaker, Ms. Jebhards. Ann Jebhards.
I'm Ann Gebhards, and I am a member of Decoding Dyslexia of Virginia. I have two children, ages five and eight. My youngest child is an FCPS student. We've removed our oldest child from FCPS. He is dyslexic. Decoding Dyslexia of Virginia would like to thank the FCPS school board for acknowledging dyslexia in their opening remarks, and to thank Dr. Karen Garza and her staff, particularly Dr. Irene Meyer, for the time they have given us during the last year. We appreciate the access we have had to include to the Special Education Conference and the Summer Literacy Institute, but there is much work to be done, and we are looking for action. DDVA is advocating for FCPS to implement teacher and staff training on dyslexia, its warning signs, and appropriate intervention strategies, early screening tests for dyslexia to include parental notification, evidence-based dyslexia remediation programs implemented with fidelity, which can be accessed by both general and special education populations, access to appropriate assistive technologies for students with dyslexia. Last year, we left each of you with a DDVA packet which included general information about our organization and dyslexia-specific facts. This year, we are providing you additional research and informational materials by known experts in the field of dyslexia, as well as the current copy of the Commonwealth of Virginia's Dyslexia Awareness Month proclamation. At a recent U.S. House of Representatives Committee hearing on the science of dyslexia, expert testimony highlighted the decades of science and peer-reviewed research on dyslexia and emphasized that despite common misunderstandings, dyslexia is not due to either a lack of intelligence or desire to learn, and with appropriate teaching methods, people with dyslexia can learn successfully. And early and appropriate action is essential for children with dyslexia. According to the National Institutes of Health, 95% of poor readers can be brought up to grade level if they receive effective help early. Given the extraordinary wealth of information on the science behind dyslexia, it is clear to quote the committee chair, Senator Lamar Smith, in summarizing expert testimony that, quote, "We don't have a knowledge gap, but a gap in action." In other words, our current understanding of dyslexia is not fully utilized in either policy or practice," end quote. It is time to translate this science into action. We hope that you find these resources useful, and we appreciate your continued support as we advocate for change for one in five children in our county. Thank you.
Thank you for all our speakers tonight for coming out and sharing your opinions with us. We appreciate it. Next item on our agenda are student representative matters, and I will go back to Mr. Latif.
Thank you. Chairman Darnat Kofax, Dr. Garza, members of the school board. Before I start with recounting what I've been up to these last few weeks, let me take an opportunity to extend my condolences to the South Lakes and Fairfax High School communities. I know what it feels like to be in a school community that has lost a student, but I'm proud to see other high schoolers in the area and in our community reaching out to the Seahawks and the Rebels and showing their support during this difficult time. Seeing other school communities that have reached out reminds students that although we attend classes in different parts of the county, we're all part of FCPS, and we band together when we need to support our friends who are facing something difficult. I really thank and appreciate the students who reached out to me during this time, and I was happy to meet with Dr. Dockery and Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lipp along with my Student Health Advisory Committee appointee Ben Press earlier this week to discuss FCPS's response to these tragedies. From the texting crisis line to providing our educators and community members with interactive simulation training on how to spot the signs of depression and mental illness, I was pleased to get a sense of what we have in place to support our students' well-being. Switching gears, I was very excited and pleased to meet with the Student Advisory Council last month at Falls Church High School and again yesterday at Edison High School. I thank Dr. Garza and Ms. Evans for attending both of our SAC meetings, and I thank Chairman Darnat Kofax for attending our meeting yesterday at Edison. We really appreciate you all coming out. Something I thought that was great was after the meeting yesterday, Ms. Evans brought together SAC delegates from the school community she represents, and we got a chance to discuss issues students care about in depth. On a very happy note, at their meeting yesterday, the SAC elected their new student leaders. I congratulate Mr. Michael Marrow of Centerville High School, who will serve as the president of the Student Advisory Council, and I congratulate Ms. Anastasia Slupakova of Lake Braddock Secondary School, who will serve as vice president for the 2014-2015 school year. Another point, earlier in my term as student representative, during the citizen participation portion of the meeting, a gentleman encouraged me to not only focus on the high schoolers I represent, but also the middle and elementary schoolers, who happen to be my constituents. And in keeping with that, late last month, I was honored to be the keynote speaker at the Terracette Elementary School SCA Officers induction. I received the invitation from Ms. Diane Standford, my third-grade teacher at Colvin Run Elementary School. She's now at Terracette. I had a great time engaging the audience and chatting with their new student council officials, who were very impressive young leaders and young politicians, I might add. Let me say, if anyone here has not spoken, if you ever get the chance to speak in front of 500 first through sixth graders in an auditorium, I really recommend you do that. It was a great experience, definitely one of the greatest experiences I've had as student rep so far. It was really a blast. And for those of you who have not been to Terracette, it's unorthodox when it comes to the design of the school. As Dr. Garza mentioned during her opening schools report last meeting, the school is quite literally situated underground, but they're under heavy renovations to update that. But it was quite the experience seeing how different schools are across the county. But however, even with the unusual underground campus design, I was very much impressed by how well-behaved, enthusiastic, and full of school spirit the Terracette students were under the leadership of their principal, Ms. Lindsay Trout, a graduate of Terracette Elementary herself. Looking to what lies ahead, I am looking forward to attending the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Bailey's Upper. We were commenting, we have high-rise elementary schools, we have schools that are built underground, we have everything in Fairfax County. And I'm looking forward to the October 15 Real Food for Kids Food Day at Mount Eagle Elementary School. That... Excuse me, that's on the 24th. Lastly, as I pledged during my first school board meeting in July, I've set this quarter's schedule for my student representative listening tour. I'll be visiting Woodson High School on October 17, next Friday, Mount Vernon on October 20, Stewart on October 29, and I'll soon set the dates for my remaining visits at Robinson Secondary and James Madison. I'll be meeting with their student leaders, their elected student leaders, their leadership classes, and hopefully their school administration. So I'm really looking forward to that and seeing what students from across the county have to say about school board topics and if they have any advice for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. Appreciate all you're doing. Next, we are going to action items, Agenda Item Number Four, and it's... We will be talking about the audit committee composition, and I would like to call on my colleague, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve increasing the audit committee membership from three school board members to four school board members and update the strategic governance measure accordingly.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stork. Thank you. All right. And Mr. Easimay.
May I speak on my motion? I'll be very brief. This is one of the recommendations coming from mostly from prior audit committee, which was chaired by Mr. Stork. And this particular recommendation was discussed at a full school board work session on September 8, that the board members felt, you know, by and large, felt that the increasing the membership from three school board members to four school board members would be consistent with the makeup of the other school board standing committees, such as governance and public engagement and compliance planning and development and committee. And I, as the current chair of the audit committee, would certainly feel that the committee would benefit from having another school board member doing a lot of work ahead of us. And if I might add, there were some other aspects of the recommendation regarding a audit committee composition, such as adding community members to the committee. The full board had not had an opportunity to discuss, you know, that aspect of the recommendation yet, but I expect that aspect to be discussed at the upcoming work session. I believe that that's going to be discussed in the member work session.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is with great pleasure that I second this and thank the board for helping to bring this forward. We have come a long way. When I first got on the board in 2004, we did not have an audit committee. We had looked long and hard at that. We debated how best to do that. At the time, the board supported a committee that would consist of two school board members and the superintendent and the deputy superintendent, and that was as far as frankly we could go at that point in time. Not ideally what I wanted at least, but at least we had a start, at least we could build something from that. And we've worked very hard. I know there's a number of people who have chaired that committee. I know Ms. Strauss has chaired a number of times, and I have done it not only originally but other times since then. But that long way is because we change sometimes happens evolutionarily, not on a revolutionary basis, and this is really an example of that. We made some changes about two and a half years ago, three years ago, in terms of the audit composition. Essentially, added a school board member and formally removed the superintendent and deputy superintendent as voting members. As with all of our committees and as with everything this school board does, everything we do is public. There's no such thing as a closed meeting unless we have a specific purpose of business that complies with the state code for that. So whether we formally have somebody there or informally have somebody there, it's truly about everybody who wants to come is welcome to come, and that's truly what we've been able to do with this committee. So I welcome anybody to come to the meetings. I know Mr. Moon is chairing it now, and I'm sure he will be equally welcoming to that committee and to those individuals, the public. I know that we have many... Some of the speakers tonight have been there many, many times, and I appreciate their diligence and focus and frankly their counsel on the number of things that we've done. And it makes a difference to have community members come and speak with us and tell us their thoughts and concerns and issues, and because that's how, at least for me, that's how I improve what I do, how I get better at what I do. We have improved our oversight with this motion. I know that we will enable us to review things more carefully and fully by having another pair of eyes on that. This does provide also consistency with our other major committees of the board, whether it be public engagement or governance. So I think there's consistency in that, and I think it's a statement by this board of the importance and increased recognition of the importance of this committee. So I'm pleased to acknowledge all that and to say that I couldn't be happier to second this, and I wanted to particularly thank a couple people that helped make this possible. First and foremost, I wanted to thank Ms. Strauss, who's chaired this committee many times and has a lot of insight and has a lot of experience in frankly what has worked and maybe not what hasn't worked so much in the past. And frankly, that is as much a part of change as anything. And Ms. McLaughlin, for your advocacy and involvement, I think this was your first year on the committee, and you clearly brought a different set of eyes, which was welcomed and needed in terms of how we look and should do what we do. I absolutely can't forget Teresa Weatherman, who has been a stalwart with the committee and helped to guide us, I think, in a lot of directions that were essential as the board's auditor. She has made a real difference in us. And our latest hire with respect to that, Chris Horton, and both of them bring in-depth knowledge and experience at the national level, which is frankly where we've gotten the best practices that we are following in our recommendations tonight. And last, but absolutely not least, Susan Quinn and Dr. Garza were essential in their guidance and thoughts about what they've observed other boards and frankly other districts having done in the past, and that helped us to, I think, realize what is truly appropriate for Fairfax. I think there's an opportunity to make further changes. I think, and I look forward to making some of those, but this clearly gives us an additional foundation to build on, and I'm very confident and very comfortable in seconding it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Strauss.
So I'm very pleased we finally are up to four. It, I think, took us a little while to expand the committee, but I'm pleased that I think my... Our colleagues agree with this step and that as we move through the night, we will be able to probably add another position during the recession, as most of our departments had to take cuts, our audit office did as well. So we are now in the position of making sure that we have more school board members on the committee, we will have more staff, so that consequently we'll be able to get more work done. And as it has been mentioned, we are happy to have anybody who wants to come to the meetings. They are always public. The work that is done by our school board auditor and her staff, all of that is posted on our website. It is a very public process. I might add, some years ago, in several iterations past, the reports that were done by the school board auditor came directly to the board. We didn't even have a committee. We just worked as a committee of a whole. So there are many ways of going about this, and I do think this is a step in the right direction. So thank you to my colleagues for being willing to go down this road. Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to the current and former members of the audit committee for getting us to where we are today. It's clearly a major step forward towards having the independent function that many of us have dreamed about for a long, long time. of us have dreamed about for a long, long time. I do feel that we're not quite there yet, and as Mr. Moon alluded, we will be having a discussion as a board about the true objectivity that I think that this group needs. So I look forward to that discussion about the composition in particular, who, who votes, who's in the room, et cetera. But for today, let's bask in our progress, and I thank everyone very much.
Any other comments? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. McLaughlin?
I know we actually have three different action items on audit, and in listening to my colleagues, I think we're all just really excited about the progress, so I'm going to reserve my comments about some of the other wonderful things about to be voted on. But specifically to this decision to add a fourth school board member to the committee, I am very pleased that this is in front of the full board. I think without question, the work of what our audit functions in the school board office can do as we expand it beyond internal audits to performance audits will be very beneficial to us as a school system, both for Dr. Garza and her team, as well as for us as a board. I think we find ourselves at times having to help the public and some of our local officials understand the complexity of the operations, and I think this will actually help us in helping the public understand in a more transparent way the work we're doing. Specifically with adding a fourth school board member, I think it just goes without saying, when you look at the school board subcommittees, without question, the audit function is one of the most important things that we do. And I'm, I think that given in my three years on the board, we've grown from an audit committee of two school board members to three, now to four, I think speaks, speaks very well of this board as a whole, that we recognize the value and responsibility of this audit function and as board members. So I'm excited about this evening's vote on this particular proposal.
Ms. Schultz?
Before I add any additional comments, I would like to, in deference to the points made by members of the community or in questions that we've received, ask, and I'm not sure if this is more appropriately directed to the maker of the motion, Mr. Stork, or to Mr. Moon as current audit chair, what the status is of the inquiry about adding two community members to the, to the audit committee?
It's just a matter of scheduling, finding enough time in the November work session to discuss. We just ran out of time at the last work session.
Okay, so it's contemplated to be discussed at the next board session?
November work session.
So I think that's an important clarification for us to make for the, for the public. I, I would say that arriving at the point that we are this evening takes a Herculean amount of effort and perseverance and dogged on task focus. And for the members of the community or members of the board who have endured with patience to arrive at this place until the board was ready, I, I think this is a banner day. I do however, think that this is a way station, not a destination in the approach to audit. I think some very valid points were brought up this evening, you know, how they were brought up, you know, maybe someone's cup of tea or not, but the bottom line is, is that the underlying issues of transparency and accountability to the public remain at the core when you're talking about us as the largest employer in the Commonwealth of Virginia and a $2.6 billion operation as the 10th largest school district in the nation. So I think we should celebrate. I think we should be mindful of the fact that it took us too long to get here and that any successive change, you know, momentum is easier to maintain than generate. And so I, I look forward to my colleagues taking the wind that's behind our back right now and understanding that we have generated this momentum with a tremendous amount of effort and that now that we've adapted to this, that we move forward with a little bit more comfort on future contemplated changes. Thank you.
Anybody else for comments before I do go back? Ms. Heinz?
I just, I guess I just wanted to throw in my two cents as well, that I, I think this, these are good changes, they send us in the right direction. When we go to the community and say that our school system needs more resources, and we seem to be consistently doing that these days, that, that argument absolutely requires that we can say we are as efficient as we can possibly be, that we are keeping a very close watch on how we spend the public's resources. And I think these changes in the audit committee and, and how we, how we audit, how we oversee what we do are very, very important. So I'm, I definitely support this.
All right. I, I just wanted to speak to Ms. Schultz, just further clarification for Mr. Moon. Indeed, we had a seven-hour or six-hour work session on Tuesday, and the, when we talk about adding the additional citizen members, we felt that that, the breadth of that conversation had to be more extensive, and we couldn't add any more time at that point. So that's why it was moved to the November work session.
Thank you.
And Ms. McLaughlin for final go back?
I guess I just had a question that might help both the board and, and the public. In terms of the motion for action in front of us, it, it mentions that we're going to increase the audit committee to four positions, but it doesn't necessarily indicate how the chair and vice chair will go about soliciting either board input on interested board members who'd like to be considered for the fourth position, or how that process will take place.
As we do all our committee appointments, if you are interested, please let me know as soon as possible. At our next meeting on October 23rd, we will appoint the fourth board member. Okay, hearing and seeing no further discussion, let me read the motion that is on the table. I move that the school board approve increasing the audit committee membership from three school board members to four school board members and update the strategic governance manual accordingly. All those in favor? It is a unanimous vote. Thank you all. Next, we move on to item 4.02, the internal audit office structure, and I also call on Mr. Moon for this motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the creation of an audit general position in the internal audit office as detailed in the agenda item.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Stork. Mr. Moon, please speak on your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, just briefly, the, the school board has had much discussion over the past several years about the organization of the school board's independent audit office and scope of our activities and plans. The board has wanted to strengthen the function of the audit office and expand the scope of the audit activities. The addition of an audit general position will certainly allow for an increase in the scope of the office's activities. Over the course of the last several years, as we, as we can all recall, we have been increasing the number of auditors in the audit office. We added two at the end of 2011 and another two at the end of the last year. What you are trying to achieve from this particular motion by increasing the number of auditors, you know, creating a audit general's office is, and also overall, our, a effort to increase the number of auditors in the audit office is not only to make sure that we are in compliance with all required laws and regulations, but also to see that whether we can find more efficiencies from our business and operating practices. The new position of audit general would also bring much higher visibility to audit office both within and without the school system. Once the creation of this position is approved by this board this evening, we are intending to conduct a national search to find the person qualified to serve, serve in this very important position. And I want to thank again a, a former audit committee chair, Mr. Stork, in leading this effort along with the other two, the former audit committees members. And this particular recommendation has been, was discussed at two school board work sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just echo Mr. Moon's comments. I think they were absolutely a good summary. I think they captured what we are truly trying to do as a board and, and I think what we'll be able to accomplish. It may take us a little bit of, of time to find the right person, but I know and I'm confident that we will, and we've been very successful about that in the past. So I, I want to highlight to the public that, that this position really captures two major aspects of our organization and puts them, the responsibility at least into one position. And this position reports to the school board itself, and that is our internal auditing function as well as performance auditing. And within the internal audit function, those are very familiar to us, we've, Teresa Weatherman has done a wonderful job over the last, I think, eight or 10 years, and I've sure enjoyed working with her on those issues. Performance is relatively new. We have many internal performance functions that are performed at the staff level, but this would give us a chance to, to try to bring at least a broader focus and maybe a more board identified focus to certain other aspects of performance. They could be efficiency and effectiveness, or just issues that the board identifies and that we capture in our audit plan and then approve as a board. So this is a great next step for us. We have obviously the most important step to accomplish after we pass this tonight is to hire the right person to really lead us to that long-term process that will provide us really effective advocate and effective inspector of our operations, and, and I'm confident that we will. So, thank you.
Seeing no other comments, the motion, oh, Ms. McLaughlin?
I just wanted to add that one of the things that's so important about this approach that our board is taking is that it truly reflects best practices of a, of a governing body. When you look at nationally, some of the largest school systems in the United States have inspector generals or auditor generals, and I'm very proud to be part of a board that is taking this very important step. And even in our conversations with the board supervisors, this action tonight will actually allow Fairfax County Public Schools to demonstrate the best practices even here in the county. And I'm hoping that as we learn often from our board supervisors' best practices, I hope they will actually look to us now and recognize that what we're putting in place goes above and beyond what our county of 1 million people have in its own government. So I, I hope we actually inspire them to look at strengthening their auditing processes with what we're about to do here tonight. I do want to share with my colleagues as well as the public that we talk a lot about finding efficiencies, but I also do believe that the 12 of us understand that it is equally important to always hold dear effectiveness. And, and what that means is that you can always be more efficient. We've been exceptionally efficient with our transportation, but what has that meant? It's meant bus ride lengths in the morning of two and a half hours. So we've been more efficient, but we've not necessarily been as effective in transporting our children so that they go to school in optimal time. So as we continue as a system, I hope that we'll, as a board, continue to focus on really embracing more about effectiveness and what we do, not always about just efficiency alone, because then I think we could be actually doing harm instead of good. So to my colleagues, I, I hope that we can see a unanimous vote here tonight, because I think this really speaks very well of the work that we've done. And I also want to give special recognition to our senior audit manager, who joined us recently, Christopher Horton. He comes from Denver Metro with a tremendous amount of experience in this area and has also really helped guide our board, and I've so appreciated the time that I've worked with him so far.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you. I won't repeat what else has been said. This is the right job at the right time, I think, for us to be adding. It does make sense as budget chair. I know all too well about the resource constraints we have, and this is a very responsible position for us to have. Some may say, well, you're spending money on a position, but this is well worth it because this person, their role will be to help us make sure that we're spending our money as impactfully and optimizing it as, as well as we can. I also think it's important, again, to acknowledge that this person is objective. It is their job to be objective. We're not asking, as someone said earlier, the fox to guard the hen house. And for those reasons, I think that this is a, a wonderful position for us to be agreeing on and to be supporting. The board of supervisors will be thrilled, the past several years, in their budget follow-on motions, they have encouraged us to do this. And so I think as the folks who are writing our checks, this can only help build cooperation and trust with our funders. So kudos to everyone who got us to this point.
Thank you. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. Building on, I think what Ms. Reed was just saying, that sometimes people are concerned when we hire non-classroom teaching positions, but actually, a robust audit department is very important. And as I said, we, we lost a number of positions during the recession, and this brings us back to a greater position of strength. When we began in this cycle in the last three years, when we knew that we wanted to be able to look at more ways of studying ourselves, we, we did the state efficiency audit, which was very interesting and very helpful. And now I'm very pleased that we are bringing the whole department to, I think, more robust strength, and it will provide greater guidance and ability for the school board to do the kind of studies that, that it would like to do. So I, I think this is an excellent step.
Ms. Schultz?
So just, I just want to clarify, at least, you know, I guess when we speak, we're speaking from our own opinion. I don't think this is a question of selecting a, a position like this and, and deeming its value to this school division and the size of the school division, and the amount of money that we deal with, and the need to find efficiencies particularly in, in the budget scenarios in which we find ourselves, as a teaching position versus a non-teaching position. Because I don't ever want to put our educators in a position where they feel like we are leading and governing the school division, picking and choosing, do we hire a teacher or do we not hire a teacher? This is a absolutely critical, essential function that has long been needed. We, we see that it's a best practice, and the board of supervisors has a tremendous return in terms of the savings that are realized. And it isn't about cutting. It's, it's not about cutting programs or cutting people out or cutting educators. So I want us to be very positive about this step because it is a demonstrative step forward in the ability of this school division to do things like performance audits and to understand how maybe we've been doing something for 10 or 20 years the same way, and just because we've always done it that way, or maybe we've tried in the past to figure out a better way to do it and we weren't successful, doesn't mean you don't keep trying. That isn't the message that our teachers and educators teach our children in the classroom, and it certainly can't be the way we lead. So we have got to do better. So we're not picking this position and investing in this position instead of investing for educators, with, for educators, but because we value the educator so much, that we've got to continue to govern and lead in the best possible fashion. And this position certainly will aid us in leading and governing the school division better.
I have a go back from Mr. Moon.
Just one quick note that, you know, we're not, we're not seeking a additional funding to the school board office to pay for higher this particular, you know, to, to fill this position. We already have enough funding, I believe, that enough to hire a, a, a audit general for this position.
That is correct, Mr. Moon. All right. Seeing no further comments, the motion on the table is to move that the school board approve the creation of an auditor general position in the internal audit office as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? Again, unanimous vote. And we move to item 4.03, the audit plan, and again, go to Mr. Moon for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to roll. I move that the school board approve the FY 2015 internal audit work plan as detailed in- in the agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stork, thank you. And Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, briefly, the annual audit plan is, as you know, the source for the oversight responsibilities of the school board audit committee and the work of the, work of the audit staff. Any additional changes to the approved plan requires the approval of the school board. Approval of this is plan was delayed. You know, usually we adopt the audit plan in July, but for this year, the plan was, approval of the plan was delayed in anticipation of a proposed change to the internal audit office. Updates to the plan because what's on the table only covers up to December and January timeframe, and any updates to the plan will be submitted to the board at a future date. And this, a particular recommendation was discussed in October for school board work session.
Mr. Stork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I fully support the introduction of the audit plan, and it's, I think, increasingly becoming important, more important to the board, and I think more recognition on the board's part about how valuable it is to get these, identify these issues, make sure that we have a thorough and effective process for monitoring our operations. So this is a great source for the public as well as the board to, to look to see how we can improve what we need to do. I, I wanted to take this moment as well to, to acknowledge what the audit committee was able to accomplish this year, which is approve an audit plan last fall. And we've executed most of that, some of that, there's a few of those audits we didn't quite get to because they have additional information or, or the rest of our work got in the way. And the rest of the work this year was, was pretty, pretty significant. We hired two, we actually recommended to the board, and the board only hired two new audit positions, auditor manager and an, and a auditor general, excuse me, an auditor, I think, two. We did what I think is maybe the most important work, which was respond to the work that the state efficiency review, the review that we had last fall, which essentially identified that we are a very efficient, very effective organization. They recommended about $10 million that we could achieve in savings, and it asked us almost to spend that much ultimately to be able to, to achieve those savings overall. So it's a real balance. The audit committee, as you may recall, was responsible for monitoring that and bringing back and ensuring that we complied with the requirements of that state efficiency review, which we did by far. I think the requirement was basically we had to adopt at least 50%. I think my last count, we were at the 80, 90% level of adoption of, of the savings as well as the items that they had recommended. The comprehensive risk assessment, I think, is one of our most powerful pieces of work this year. The committee not only helped to put together the RFP, but also was involved with, working with staff to ensure that they identified somebody that would meet our needs and then brought that to the board for its ultimate adoption. And we did that through completion, which was in June of this year. And then as a result of that, we made a number of recommendations that we're really going through tonight with, frankly, I think the only one significant left, the only one significant that's left is the public members of the committee, which we will be considering shortly, and I'm, I'm confident we'll be bringing back to a future meeting. So again, I want to thank Ms. Strauss and Ms. McLaughlin for their fine work, along with Ms. Weatherman and, and Mr. Horton and, and Dr. Garza and, and Susan Quinn. And I say this very fondly to Mr. Moon for recommending my appointment as chair of the audit committee, and I hope it doesn't happen again. It's too much work, Mr. Moon, I'm sorry. No, but it was a pleasure, and I think we accomplished a lot, and I, I thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I, I think that this is a, a good audit plan for us to begin with. But I wanted to just respond to, we had some citizen participation tonight that asked us a specific question about, you know, adding something to the audit plan. So I just wanted, for the sake of the public, and that, that we talk about how that happens, because I actually think that the proposal is, is, is a good one and one that I might like to pursue through the audit committee. So Mr. Moon, as chair of the audit committee, if you could explain to the public how we add items to this audit plan on an ongoing basis.
You know, any school board member can make, you know, can bring the, you know, any, any, any proposed plan for discussion by the full board at a school board regular forum discussion session, or audit committee members, you know, themselves can bring something, some proposal for audit committee discussion. Ultimately, ultimately, recommendation will be brought to the full board, and full board will act upon any recommendation.
Good, Ms. Hines? Okay. Ms. McLaughlin.
So I just thought, again, for the public who's here and listening and, and hopefully learning more about this school system and the school board's commitment to a robust audit process, if, Mr. Moon, you wouldn't mind, maybe just speaking briefly about when you look at this audit plan in front of us from July to December, how it was, you know, ultimately identified that these are the most mission-critical things that we should be focusing on, you know, for the remainder of this calendar year? Just because I think it might be informative for people to understand how, how do we, as board members, many of us who do not have financial and performance audit background, but, you know, this is something we own when we vote for it?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a more pointed person from the internal audit office, Ms. Weatherman, to respond to the question.
Hello. The audit plan that we have currently before the board consists mostly of items that are left over from last year. Those items were selected based on an assessment of areas of potential risk, areas of concern addressed by, or mentioned by the board and management. Those items that we are carrying forward, we should finish. And then added to this is several new items, new performance audits, one that Mr. Horton will be doing, or Dr. Horton will be doing, dealing with construction management. That is an area that was first approved last year, construction audits, and we've brought that in under that auspice, but it's expanded scope, looking at a more global or enterprise-wide look. And then we also have added the time and attendance audit to address some of the concerns that we're getting from not only staff, but also some of the issues that you've seen posted in the press and other things that we've encountered, to take a good, close look at how we're doing time and attendance management throughout the system.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherman. That's exactly what I was hoping you could help convey, because I think it does show that, again, this is looking at best practices and how we can identify the things that are most important to the school division, and that we're really going to look at this to the best of our abilities. So I appreciate that.
Ms. Strauss.
First, I'm delighted to hear my colleagues as interested in the audit work plan. We actually have, the school board approves the audit work plan. This has been going on, I think, for almost eight years at least, maybe longer. And usually, the audit work plan is approved in July when everybody's on vacation, and there's very little discussion. But in the process of developing an, an audit work plan, when I've been chair or with previous school board, before many of you were on the board, other school board members would ask for suggestions from the board. And, and I think it's, it's been mentioned that the work plan is developed broadly, but it is the school board ultimately that must approve the work plan and drive the work of the, of the audit office. So I am delighted that there is this much interest in discussion of an audit work plan. Good for you all. I've been frustrated for years on that one.
Mr. Moon, for a go back.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick note again, that I am very proud of the fact that our audit work is very, very transparent. We are always open to public. All our audit reports, we, we post them on our website for the public to see, and anybody can come to our audit committee meeting. And, and as you probably know that, you know, I'm not, I'm not criticizing our counterparts on the government, you know, county government side, but we, we do meet every month. You know, county board of supervisors or the committee, they only meet about four times a year, and they generally meet in the chairman's office. But we do that out in open, where anybody can come, easily come. So you should take some pride in the fact that we are being that transparent, and we work really, really hard.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Hines for another go back.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to Ms. Strauss. Having spent my first year on the board with you on the audit committee, I, I remember that as well, that it seemed like the board members were not as involved in, in creating that plan. And I've wondered why also, I think a couple of things, that's one of the reasons that I think having a couple of citizen members on the audit committee who are experienced in, you know, doing audits for large organizations, I think would help, you know, because I think you need that voice in there of experience. And, you know, it is difficult, I think, for a, a person to come here and, like, like tonight, and to present, you know, an audit proposal publicly. I, I have stood at that lectern back before I was on the board, and it is a little intimidating. But I think we have to make sure that we make clear, as Mr. Moon said, that everything we do is, is open and public. And any member of the public at any time can contact your school board member and say, look, I, you know, I think you should take a look at this because I have some questions about it, and could this fit into the audit plan for the year? You know, we have a lot of people in this community who know a lot about this kind of work. So I, I think, definitely think that we're making improvements that will make it more likely that we have meaningful changes in the audit plan as we go forward.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I just wanted to add something to what Mr. Moon said. I, I do agree that it's, it's very much a strength of this board and the system that we wanted to be as transparent. But I'm also very hopeful that whether it's the audit plan or any other work that comes out of the audit office, that as we get an auditor general who really does understand best practices, that that person will help lead our board at continuing to be more robust in the work we do. And what I guess I'm specifically referencing is that in my time on the audit committee, I don't recall, but a few times where we went into closed session to have conversation. And there will be times, I think, when you're doing important audit work, that that might be needed, and, and that again is because you're talking about doing highly sensitive scrutiny of work, and, and we would want that to happen. So sometimes our closed meetings are, again, always for the, the benefit of doing the best work for our public, and certainly not to keep things from the public.
All right. With that, I, I do want to thank all of our former and current audit committee board members and staff who've worked hard to make these significant changes happen. They do, we do have a great deal of transparency. We are exhibiting best practices, and I am very happy to see the direction that this is going, and I thank you all for your hard work on these efforts. And with that, the motion that is on the table is that I move that the school board approve the FY 2015 internal audit work plan as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor? And once again, three unanimous votes. Thank you all. All right. And as I said, at our next business meeting on October 23rd, the board, the board will appoint the fourth board member to the audit committee. Next, we will go to action taken, confirmation of action taken in our closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with a serious crime related to an alleged incident in the community and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor of this motion? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Me, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. All those opposed? Abstentions? Abstentions, Ms. McLaughlin, with Mr. Stork away from the table. The next motion, Ms., I call on Ms. Schultz.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed with intention of distributing a Schedule I controlled substance and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Smith. All those in favor of the motion on the table? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Mr. Velkoff, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. Not in favor, opposed? Ms. McLaughlin abstained. Ms. McLaughlin will abstain on this, and Mr. Stork is away from the table. All right. And the next one, Mr. Moon.
I move to excuse from attendance as school students identified in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 22.1, 254B1.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor of the motion on the table? Mr. Moon, Ms. Reed, Mr. McElveen, Ms. Hines, Ms. Smith, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Evans, and Ms. Schultz. All those opposed? Ms. McLaughlin abstentions? Abstentions, Mr. Velkoff, with Mr. Stork away from the table. All right. Give me a moment. All right. Next items are on our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. First item is 5.01, approve the minutes of the June 16th, 2014 all-day work sessions meeting, all-day work sessions meeting opening and the September 18th regular school board meeting. 5.02, adopt policy 1710, citizen advisory committees to the school board. Policy 1800, guidelines for conduct of school board and other election campaigns. And policy 2101, physical examinations, immunizations, contagious disease, treatment of injuries. And policy 3012, operational guidelines, school libraries as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, authorize the division superintendent, chief operating officer, or the assistant superintendent for facilities and transportation services, any one of whom may act alone in consultation with legal counsel for the school system to negotiate, execute, and administer on behalf of the school board a lease agreement for the instructional program support center for warehouse space located at 6732 Industrial Drive in Springfield, Virginia 22151, including all related documentation. 5.04, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Are there any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Next item is new business. And the following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, adopt the newly revised 2014 Fairfax County purchasing resolution previously adopted by the board of supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. 6.02, award a contract to the Springfield Estates Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03, adopt policy 3202, new course proposals and deletion and consolidation of existing courses as detailed in the agenda item. And 6.04, adopt 4419, smoke-free environment as detailed in the agenda item. Next item is superintendent matters, and I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, our FCPS students from the class of 2014 have yet again posted impressive gains on the SAT exams. SAT exams, outperforming their peers in Virginia and the nation on the SAT. FCPS scores are 41 points above the state's average in critical reading, 58 points above the state's average in mathematics, and 49 points above the state's average in writing. SAT results compiled by the College Board show that FCPS students posted average scores of 556 in critical reading, 570 in mathematics, and 542 in writing, for an overall composite score of 1, 1668. Nonschools in Fairfax County improved over the last year in all three sections, and we're really proud because it's very difficult to accomplish. Hayfield and Lake Braddock Secondary Schools, and Centerville, Chantilly, Falls Church, Herndon, Marshall, South County, and Westfield High Schools. Students at Herndon High School posted the greatest gains by increasing the school's critical reading average by 21 points, the mathematics average by 22 points, and the writing average by 19 points. I thought it was pretty impressive. Of the 25 high schools in FCPS, 14 saw an increase in their critical reading average, and 14 saw an increase in their mathematics average, and 12 saw an increase in their writing average over last year. So there is a news release that is available on our website for individuals who are interested in some more details related to these scores. I congratulate all of our schools on these impressive gains on the SAT, a national measure of college readiness. I'd like to also congratulate Haycock Elementary School and Principal Kelly Shears, their teachers and staff. Haycock Elementary School is one of seven public schools in Virginia to be named the 2014 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. It's an arduous process to go through and be selected, so we're very proud. The Blue Ribbon Schools program recognizes public and private K-12 schools that are academically superior or demonstrate dramatic gains in student achievement. Haycock Elementary School will be honored at an awards ceremony in November in Washington, D.C. And then finally, I'm kicking off my listening tours next week. For this school year, I will hold five tours in each of our regions. The first will be held in partnership with Dan Stork at the Mount Vernon Town Hall on Tuesday at 7:00 p.m. at Whitman Middle School. I look forward to seeing our constituents and many of our stakeholders and parents and employees at those events. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Next up on the agenda are reports, and these are reports of our committee, Board Committee reports, and I will start with Mr. Stork if you would talk about the Joint Budget Committee both on September 24th and the one just held yesterday on October 8th.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. We've had two meetings since our last board meeting, and we have actually made, I think, some progress in terms of identifying the core issues that we wanted to tackle as a committee. Staff put together a three-page document which is available online, and I'll be sending out to board members kind of a summary of that probably tomorrow sometime. But we identified not only all the different core elements which have to do with kind of the budget process fix, we have changing some of the terminology as part of that, we have some opportunities to, I think, if you will, smart savings, smart services, Task Force Two kind of issues that we can look at, transportation and space utilization, et cetera, are part of that. We have also a number of items that we've looked at that are more global that we think will help us more jointly identify our common needs as a county and help to define more strategically how we best meet all those needs, not only the schools, but in healthcare and development, et cetera. So we have many things that we're still working on. We are absolutely right in the middle of things. We work through a kind of a checkoff list or a metric, a table, if you will, that identifies some of those key issues. And again, those are available, and I'll be sending that out, filled in and with some explanation to you all probably sometime tomorrow. So we'd welcome your comments. Please share them with me. Linda Smith and I have, I think, worked pretty hard to try to make sure we move things forward. It will be still a significant challenge, I think, to produce an outcome that will help us address some of the frictions in the process that maybe aren't needed, while still helping us all focus on the larger goal that we have as elected officials serving all residents of Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Next, we will go to our planning session, our work session, and I will call on Mr. McElveen to talk about the legislative agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This year, we are proceeding as we have done in the past with an expedited schedule so that we can get our legislative plan to our legislators by November 13th. We will be coming up with our priority document as we have the past two years, and we are in the process of getting some feedback from some board members on addition to the legislative program. Once all those are compiled, we will then send those back out to the board and try and be as succinct and precise as possible in conveying what we want our legislators to do this year. So that's where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to strategic planning, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. The board had an opportunity for a long and, I think, very fruitful discussion on the process of the strategic plan. We discussed among ourselves, shared, Dr. Garza participated, looking at the development of the goals and outcomes under the four major areas, student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. Dr. Garza will take into consideration our comments and suggestions, and there will be another refined look at the strategic plan on November 13th at the next work session. The rollout and the careful development of the strategic plan will take some months because it's important, obviously, that the entire piece be right because it will guide us for a very long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moon, audit.
Okay, thank you. At the audit work session on October 6th, we discussed about audit plan and also audit or general position, and all your deserving this board, voting on those items.
Thank you. Ms. Reed, budget.
Thank you. At the work session, we discussed the draft budget development strategy for FY 2016 and beyond. Its purpose is for school board members and leadership team to share a common understanding. We discussed the components briefly, which include the fiscal forecast, our approach to optimizing resources, and education and outreach. And we acknowledge that we need to work closely with the Public Engagement Committee as we implement education and outreach regarding the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Schultz, public engagement. If you could speak to both the work session and your Public Engagement Committee meeting yesterday.
Okay, we'll go in reverse order. So the Public Engagement Committee met last evening at 6:00 p.m. We covered some core communication issues for the board that you, as my colleagues, are going to be seeing an update about our newsletter process. We're trying to have a more intentional approach in our communication strategy, both for you individually as board members and then collectively for the board. We finalized the education summit agenda and speakers with the help of Ms. Hunter and DCCO, and looking forward to a very strong education summit on October 25th at Edison. Faith Community Outreach Breakfast is a topic that you'll see at our next work session that we have done the groundwork on and will be bringing to you for approval and selecting a date in early December. Developing a communications plan for implementation for the blueprint for change, that's an ongoing discussion with the board based on information that's coming in as we continue to refine our decision process and the information. And we have a communication strategy on hold for the budget depending upon how a few things pan out there. Going to the work session, we talked about, I don't know, I didn't have that on my agenda.
Talked about what? The education summit and the public engagement?
Well, yeah, the same thing.
Same thing.
Exactly.
But you were briefing the board on that.
We didn't expand any further. We were quick and efficient in our communications during the work session.
And we appreciated that, given the late hour of that meeting. And finally, earlier this evening, Mr. Velkoff, if you will report on what we talked about at the forum.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We dealt with three issues today. The first was brought forward by Mr. Stork, a proposal to replace the word "citizen" in FCPS documents. There was appreciation of the merits and also some concerns raised about the consequences, and the board chose not to refer that to governance. The second issue was advanced by Ms. Hines and Mrs. Reed. It was a proposal to search for a different process for the election of the board chair and vice chair, and it was agreed by the board to refer that to the Governance Committee to consider some potential alternatives and bring recommendations back to the board. And then finally, Mr. Moon brought forward a proposal to look at the nondiscrimination policy that we have towards our employees with the intent of including sexual orientation in the protected classes, and that was referred immediately to staff for action.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Next, we are on to board matters, and I will start with Mr. Moon.
Pass.
Ms. Reed.
Just two things quickly. Next Saturday is the Merrifield Fall Festival, right here in the Mosaic District, from 11 to 6. I also want to thank the students who've been writing letters to the soldiers that we do every year around this time. We have received over 1,600 letters already, and those are in preparation for the Volunteer Fest on Saturday, October 25th. I encourage you also to go to the Volunteer Fairfax website if you're interested. There are many volunteer opportunities on that day. It's National Make a Difference Day. And last but not least, I have one vacancy. I am looking for someone to serve as my appointee on the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities. They meet once a month, except during August. If you're interested, please contact me. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen.
I will just say that I'm very excited that we are again launching on our listening tours, and I would like to commend Dr. Garza for taking this upon herself to do them. And so that's very exciting, and I look forward to joining as many as possible. And thank you, Mr. Stork, for, as always, being the first in line.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to do something that I've never done before, and I hope I don't have to do it again. I'll try to be quick. Earlier tonight during citizen participation, a statement was made about me. That was not true, and I just want to set the record. The speaker said that I had used a study, which she described as junk science, to advocate for county staff's residential studio unit proposal. I don't know where the speaker got that information, but I have never advocated for the residential studio unit proposal. Actually, it's my personal opinion that it is not the number-one strategy that we need to be looking for as a county in terms of fixing our housing issues. I don't think that it would really help some of the issues we have as a school system when it comes to having high concentrations of families in poverty. I don't think that the studio unit proposal really would help that. So I never advocated for that. I never would. I don't agree with it. So, yeah, I don't mind being held accountable for things I do, but I never did that. So I wanted to set the record straight on that. Just a couple of things. I had a great meeting earlier this week at Waples Mill Elementary School with the science lead teachers out there with Sean Duffy and Elaine Tolan. It was wonderful to walk around Waples Mill and see all the wonderful things they're doing and watch our awesome teachers, our science lead teachers, learn from another teacher who is doing it and can kind of show them the ropes. It was really a lot of fun. I also, next week, we'll be meeting with the Louise Archer Robotics Team. Looking forward to that. Also, we'll be at the South Lakes High School PTA meeting next Monday. I will be meeting with PTA leaders in Hunter Mill District at the end of this month. I look forward to those conversations. The Homecoming Parade for James Madison High School is on October 17th. I'll be, hope I get there in time to ride in a car and wave to everybody. And I am so looking forward to the Bailey's Upper Elementary School Rip and Cutting on the 15th. I have not yet seen that wonderful place, and I'm going to enjoy doing that. And just a quick reminder, there are new rules about voter identification this year. So if anybody's watching and you are worried about that, please contact the County Office of Elections and make sure that you have what you need so that you can vote in November.
Pass. Mr. Velkoff.
Pass.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, I will try to be as brief as I can, but actually, it's been quite a busy few weeks since our board last met, and a few things that I want to share with my colleagues and the public. First of all, on September 29th, Johns Hopkins University held a mindfulness and learning symposium, and myself along with Mary Ann Panarelli attended that conference, and it was an all-day affair, and brought leading researchers from up and down the Eastern Seaboard to come and speak about mindfulness and learning, particularly with a focus on K-12 education. And not only did it talk about mindfulness and stress reduction, but what was also fascinating is that a UVA professor from the Curry School of Education was speaking about their program Care for Teachers, and that's where they teach the mindfulness strategies to teachers. And then they did their academic, or I guess they would call them their research studies to see what was sort of the post-effect of that instruction on the teachers in terms of, you know, did it help lower stress levels for teachers and how it impacted their approach to their jobs. And so it was a very inspiring day. Anyone who's followed mindfulness will know that John Cabot Zinn up from the University of Massachusetts is known as the godfather of mindfulness, and he was there, and he's getting older, and, you know, it was just to be there with someone who really has brought over 30 years of educational efforts and the fact that mindfulness is now at major universities throughout the United States, with professional sports teams, with Google and other major corporations. It was really fantastic to be there and see how this may now start to enter into teaching those social-emotional lifelong skills that I know we've all talked about here in Fairfax County. So I wanted my colleagues to know that in my best efforts, I will try to summarize the eight hours of the symposium and just some highlights for you. The other thing is that Mr. Moon and I were at Frost Middle School later that week on October 2nd because Dominion Power donated funds for Frost Middle School to work toward an eco-garden, and it will be the first of its kind. It will have a solar creek that they're hoping to then replicate at other schools around the county, but just a wonderful way for us as we looked at Portrait of a Graduate and wanting to increase, you know, awareness of our environment for our students. This is being looked at, this prototype at Frost that hopefully will be bringing to other schools, but the generosity of Dominion Power is very much appreciated, and I will should say that one of the executives happens to be a Frost parent, so we're grateful for our Fairfax County parents who look to help our schools in that way. And then I just, I wanted to mention that, as many of my colleagues know, this week it was International Walk to School, and I was invited by one of my elementary schools, Cardinal Forest, to join them and walk with their community to school, and it was really a fantastic turnout. And I know our Safe Rides to School king advocate, Jeff Anderson, would have been thrilled to see the number of students. But a special shout-out to Principal Karen Kenna. She really, as a principal, has been leading this effort among her faculty for health and wellness. So as a result, she has Workout Wednesday, where staff come slightly early, and they do yoga and other type of workout exercises together before they start their school day, and that's every Wednesday. So I think she's really helping to bring that to the faculty, and that's a very good thing. And then I also wanted to just mention that tomorrow is also Woodson High School's Homecoming Weekend, and Woodson is going to be having, I believe it's now their third annual parade, which was a tradition long past, forgotten, and was resurrected several years ago. And this is where the football members, all of the other fall sports teams come. It's a parade through the community, and elected officials are invited to come as well, and the homecoming court is all there. And it's really wonderful to see the community come out, and we all throw candy to get the kids excited for being there to watch the parade in the first place, but it's a nice tradition, and I just hope Mother Nature gives them nice weather for not just Woodson, but all schools who are celebrating a homecoming this weekend. And I will embarrass my husband by saying that he has his 30th Woodson reunion this week. weekend, so he's going to be feeling his years. And then finally, as I shared with my colleagues tonight, a Fairfax County student who happens to live in Braddock District, his name is Jimmy McLaughlin, and he graduated in June of 2014, and as announced today by the National Football Foundation, he is one of five young men who have been recognized as the Scholar Athletes of the Year. So it was only the second time in Fairfax County history that we've had a student selected, and only the fourth student out of the national capital area. So it needs to say, the young man's quite excited, especially because he gets to go up to New York City in December for the honor. But what I love most about it is that it's celebrating scholar athletes. It's not just athleticism, it's really saying, you know, academics is so important, and so for these five young men being recognized nationally as high school athletes, I'm very excited for them and certainly happy for Jimmy.
And that's your son, isn't he?
I'm sure from all of us, it's absolutely the kind of thing you should be talking about. It's what our schools are all about, is developing children into fine young men, so you should be right, you're right to be proud. A couple of things to, from, I wanted to thank the Mason Neck Community Association. They have their annual elected officials and candidates forum just a couple nights ago, and as usual, it was well-attended, and it's just a really amazing place to go in Fairfax County, something that's, in essence, so rural that's in Fairfax County, so it's always a pleasure to go there. I wanted to thank all the schools. I attend about 15 schools back to night, back-to-school nights, which I thoroughly enjoy. I consider it the favorite, my favorite night of the school year anyways, and heard a lot of different things from parents, as well as teachers and others, and it was just, I always learn an incredible amount. And one of the things that was highlighted to me was a new teacher, actually, not a new teacher, but a teacher new to Fairfax County who had been in Prince William and came back and was very pleased to be here, and was just urging us to make sure we re-add or re-add back in more teacher development and support dollars. They were particularly understood in that, that's something that they felt would help them, particularly to get, I think, get reintegrated and maybe learn more about the system. So I told her I would be happy to pass that on, and I know that that's something we've sure talked a lot about, and I know funding is a core issue of that. I have office hours this Saturday. I have 10 to 12 o'clock at Lorton Library in the southern part of Mount Vernon District, and in the more northern part, at the Sherwood Hall Library from 12:30 to 2:30. I welcome everybody to come. It's first-come, first-served, and there's usually a lot of folks there, so, and it's, I will stay as long as I need to to make sure I talk with everybody, but it's always a pleasure. And then I thank you, Dr. Garza, for making Mount Vernon and Lee, in this case, the area at least, the first of your listening tours. It is something that I greatly value and one that I feel strongly about, the Mount Vernon community having a town hall meeting, which is the core of what I do every year, and thank you for being willing to be part of that. We have, on the 14th, which is this coming Tuesday, at 7:00 at the Whitman Middle School Lecture Hall, we have Dr. Garza along with Debbie Tyler, who's the Region III Assistant Superintendent, and we will also have, I think, many, many people there. Usually, it's about 150, 200 people there. I know they have lots of questions. I've been hearing many of them, and things that we all might expect, programs, as well as boundaries and concerns about their children and what their needs, and meeting their children's needs. And then on the 15th, I'm pleased to say that Dr. Lockhart will be joining us at the South County Middle School, which is in the more southern part of the Mount Vernon District, and he, along with Ms. Lockard, or, excuse me, Ms. Atwater, will be there, and she represents Region IV Assistant Superintendent, and we look forward to a good group of folks coming as well. Usually, I have wonderful at-large attendance, and I welcome any other school member who wants to come. It's usually a good group, and usually a fairly feisty group about the things that they care about, and I'm always happy to listen, so thank you.
Ms. Charles?
Thank you. Congratulations again to Haycock for being recognized as a blue ribbon school. This is an accomplishment, and good job, students, teachers, and Dr. Kelly Shears. Congratulations to McLean Band. They won first place in their band competition. Herndon Robotics Team got second place in their competition, and I am very, very proud of Herndon High School with their accomplishments with the SATs. SATs aren't everything, but Herndon High School has, it is a wonderful school community. It is diverse. We are welcoming children now from other parts of the world. It shows that when you really develop relationships with every student, which they do at Herndon, you are very intentional with your academic support and instruction, you can make a difference. With the leadership of Herndon High School, the entire Herndon pyramid has adopted the tenants of a community of hope, and it is a very cohesive pyramid. The teachers, the community work together, and there is a tremendous belief that every child can succeed. So, good job, Herndon. I am very, very proud, and I think that they are a model for all of us to emulate, as they welcome children from all over the world, where they will say that failure is not an option, and it truly is not at Herndon. Success is what they are after. Just a quick update, theater season is beginning in all of our high schools, and Cappies were in full swing, and for those who would like to be entertained, November 14th, Woodson High School will be putting on White Christmas. Lee, on November 15th, will be doing One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest, Mount Vernon. On November 15th, we'll be doing the somewhat true tale of Robin Hood. James Madison will also be on November 15th. Don't know yet what the show will be. If you go to the Cappies NCA webpage, you will see all the theater productions, public, private, and homeschool kids, where we will have our student journalists and critics who will be adjudicating the show, so be very exciting. And I believe we now, Dr. Garza, thank you very much, all school board members may attend all cultural events at schools as a guest, so I encourage you to go to your school's concerts, plays, what have you. It's a lot of fun, great entertainment, and the price is right. Thanks.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I want to thank all the PTA presidents that came to a meeting a couple of Saturdays ago to discuss Mason District school issues. I think we all got a lot out of it, particularly the interaction and coming up with different ideas. I think it was a wonderful conversation, and I plan to do another one later on in the school year to get the same group back together again. I particularly enjoyed meeting with student leaders over lunch yesterday. The students were from Stewart, Annandale Falls Church, Woodson, and our hosts at Edison High School. We had, it followed a presentation on stress and balance, and I appreciate DeeDee Baylor making an excellent presentation, and Dr. Garza following up with her excellent words to the students. When we went around the room, and I asked them, you know, what issues they particularly wanted to talk about, of course, it was on their minds, but I think this would have been the case anyway, stress was an ongoing theme, as was homework load, and the issue of bullying and social media came up as well. So we had, on a very positive note, they talked about the different things that their schools were doing, and I think that the, talking together about the various things they were doing, upperclassmen mentoring freshman students at one school, for example. Another school that was developing is in the process of developing a bracelet that they, that they pass from student to student for kind and positive acts, and that gets recorded, and so people know that these things are going on. A heyday, where everybody just says "hey" to everybody in the hallway, and the girl who was telling me about that said that they all just felt so good that day when they just said "hey" to everybody in the hall. So there were a number of things, and I think people got good ideas from one another, and one of the things that I would welcome doing would be as liaison to Shack, which is taking on the issue of mental wellness this year, to compile some of these ideas, so we, so every school can kind of get an idea. And I want to thank Mr. Latif for joining us and for helping the conversation along very much, and of course, Ben Press, who is your Shack person as well. So I think we got a lot of good ideas out of that conversation, so I appreciated the students staying for that. I was glad to be able to participate in the second Shine on Casey Golf Tournament, which was fully subscribed this year. It's an excellent, it's an excellent event for an excellent cause. The proceeds of the golf tournament go to the Casey Schulman Scholarship Fund, which goes to a Stewart High School student, and the main qualification for the recipient is that they show kindness, and I think that that's a wonderful criteria, and I was glad that it was so well-attended and by the enthusiasm over the live auction items, I can tell you, I think that it was very, very successful in raising funds for that excellent cause. I was also pleased to go to the tobacco-free signage unveiling at Ossian Hall Park, just a catty corner from Annandale High School. This was part of our effort. We last, at our last board meeting, we approved our own signage for making our fields and playgrounds tobacco-free, so I appreciated the Park Authority, County, and Live Healthy Fairfax officials being there, and my colleagues, Mr. Stork and Mr. McElveen. It was wonderful to see you there as well, so we had that unveiling, and we will soon see all these signs on our own park, playgrounds, and field. Coming up this Saturday, there's a Health and Wellness Fair at Bailey's Elementary School. It's, anyone in the community who wants to come to a Health and Wellness Fair, you are welcome to come. It's from 11 to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday at Bailey's Primary, I'll call it, the original Bailey's, that's where it's going to be held, and at Bailey's Upper. We're going to have the ribbon cutting for Bailey's Upper this coming Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m., and anyone who would like to come and join us, we would be delighted to see you there.
Ms. Schultz?
We've been busy, so that's a great thing. So first of all, I would like to give my condolences to Kara Goliass's family and the Fairfax Rebels, as you all continue to recover. It's always difficult to have another school community faced with a difficulty like this, but I would like to highlight those who have turned a difficult or tragic situation into something positive, and the Josh Anderson Foundation, which is joshandersonfoundation.org, is having the Joshua Ball on October 23rd at the top of the town. I encourage people to go there. Unfortunately, that's the night of a board meeting, and we won't, none of us will be able to attend, so make sure that you're supporting that wonderful opportunity if you can. I want to specifically highlight, as the Public Engagement Chair, that tomorrow is the end of the deadlines for turning in your applications for the Student Leadership Development Program. This is a long weekend, so maybe some principals might see way clear to allowing a few applications that might get done over the weekend. This is a very important program that this Board began and has yielded tremendous leaders. I think we've had a tremendous opportunity to engage with students on a very real level and for them to work with us individually as board members over the course of a school academic year, and learning about the way we govern and run a large organization like this. So I strongly encourage, if anybody's on the tipping point of participating in this or submitting an application, please go ahead and do so. In particular, Springfield District has had a huge number of applications. I would like to highlight two of those. Anastasia Slepikova, who Mr. Latif identified just being nominated and elected Vice President of Student Government Council, and then Jimmy O'Hara was another one of mine, who I've just written a letter of recommendation to Congressman Wolf to receive a nomination for a, nomination for a appointment, appointment to the U.S. Naval Academy. And so those are two of my student leaders just recently, who have gone on to demonstrate leadership in the community, so I definitely encourage that. I have personally been extremely busy. I have been to Chantilly High School, meeting with Teresa Johnson, Rocky Run Middle School, meeting with Anthony Terrell, South County High School with the interim principal, Dale Rumberger, South County Middle School with Marcia Manning, Robinson PTA with Matt Eline, Cardinal Forest PTA with Karen Kenna, as my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, highlighted, Union Mill PTA with Principal Kathleen Case. Oh, and I'm tired just saying this. I have attended the ACSD Retreat as that community gets up and running. I've had a very interesting opportunity to have a collegial phone call with a colleague from Metro Nashville, who has reached out to us, was looking for a peer school division, and wanted to know about our public engagement as a newly-elected board member in Nashville, so it was wonderful to liaise with board members from, you know, across the country and talk to them about their public engagement and give some advice. I do want to wish Robinson a happy homecoming. I'm going to be at the pep rally tomorrow, and the Taste of Robinson tomorrow afternoon. I'll be at the Willow Springs PTA on Tuesday, and then after that, I will go over to Centerville High School on Tuesday evening for the principal search meeting with the community. The Saturday is Centerville Day, and Sunday is Clifton Day, so there's a lot to choose from. Thank you.
Mr. Latif, you'd like to speak for a moment?
One quick thing. I did not mention this during my remarks, because, just waiting for the consent agenda to go through, but I'd like to congratulate Ms. Anastasia Slepikova, who's actually my appointment to the Human Relations Advisory Committee. She's out of Lake Braddock. Ms. Rachel Lou of Langley, who's going to be my appointee to the Challenge Materials Interdepartmental Review Committee, that's quite the title, and Ms. Kelly Long of Lee High School, my appointee to the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities. Congratulations to those people.
Thank you, Mr. Latif. And finally, I would like to say, I too have enjoyed attending many back-to-school nights, and now I am at meeting with principals at many of my schools, getting updates about the start of school, how that's going. Lots of excitement, love to see the energy at the start of the school year. As the Chair, I am looking for outreach opportunities to meet, and as such, I met with my colleague, Ms. Smith and Mr. Fry, yesterday from the Board of Supervisors. I will continue to reach out to my colleagues so we can schedule joint meetings with as many Boards of Supervisors members as we can, as we continue to dialogue and build relationships. And Ms. Bulova and I are meeting on a bimonthly basis as well. And I did meet also with the Fairfax City School Board, and we shared lots of good ideas together. A, I do, again, as people mentioned, I attended the Student Advisory Council yesterday, and it's always such an impressive group that share their ideas and concerns, and I thank you for that. And Ms. Evans, two ideas that I love for stress management that they talked about were pajama day, and I believe pajama week, somebody was saying, Harris, we were saying it during SOL time, and also yoga, so I'm a big fan. And I did want to clarify that as we moved to regions this year, the listening tours will be in the region, and Mr. Stork's region and I are together, and so Mr. Stork, his, he always has town halls for many years, so Dr. Garza will be partnering with his listening tour, and that will be part of my Region III as well, and I will be attending that meeting as well, so I just wanted to clarify that. And thank you all, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.